Bellevue, Idaho. City of Bellevue, Idaho, Monday, April twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, five thirty one P. M. Calling the meeting to order. Amy, will you do roll call?
I hear Mr. Donnie.
Yes.
Council President Shay.
Yes.
Councilmember Bergen.
Yes.
Councilmember Mahoney.
Is he muted?
I can hear you, everybody's in view talking.
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Reed. Here, Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
The councilmember Openoff is absent.
Yes. Just a reminder, please mute your your cell phones, except for emergency or emergency personnel. And if you're on Zoom, please stay on mute until you are called upon. Notice of agenda compliance, finding that the regular meeting notice and agenda were posted in accordance with Idaho Code seventy four dash two zero four, within forty eight hours prior to the meeting at the City of Bellevue City Hall, post office, and on the city's website on April twenty fourth, twenty twenty five.
Make a motion. Our agenda was posted in accordance with Idaho Code seventy four dash two zero four.
Second.
Call on cover.
Hi.
Hi.
We will move on to mayor and council reports. I will get us started off. A reminder that next weekend, just because we won't be convenient again, next weekend is our clean sweep with the E R C Environmental Resource. Councilmember Jessica Openoff worked with Mike from Clear Creek to get additional dumpsters for City of Bellevue residents to dump wood, furniture, appliances, tires, so those will be all set out around Memorial Park. It starts at nine A. M. On Saturday, it's an opportunity to participate in cleaning up the city of Bellevue, and it's an opportunity for you to come dump some of your unwanted things and get them out of your your own space, so please utilize that as it's available to you as a free service for Saturday only. That is what I have for now on my mayor update. Any other council updates?
You you mentioned in your your newsletter the flyers on on Main Street.
The flyers, yes.
Yeah, which they stand out, just kind of sitting there in the folders. Also, they were reflective. I don't know, one night I was driving by, and that's a great thing, not so much this time of year, but in December, when it's dark at five o'clock, you know, having those reflectors, I think, is a valuable addition for those.
And entertaining when they're blowing your window at night. They're reflecting you like.
I'm glad you brought that up. Thank you. Yeah, that was spearheaded by Case McGee from our Streets Department. And that had come before a previous council for a little bit of like design discussion, and the reflective strip was something that came out of a previous council discussion, so. Think that they're hopefully very effective, and as I'd mentioned in my newsletter, a first step in public safety, definitely not a solution, but it's a, we hear you, we're working on it, and it's a first step, so thank you for bringing that up. Any other council updates?
I wanted to just suggest that as you move forward with the Blue Cross grant, I don't know if you've ended up adding somebody from the Parks Committee to that group, but they have such an extraordinary wealth of knowledge, and I think that you would be doing yourself a favor if you put somebody from that committee on there to help you identify what things are real or not, even that you conceive as saying, wow, this is a need of this particular group, and they they seem to have a tremendous amount of information.
We, thank you, we're right there with you. Brian has been working with the Parks Committee, and we do have a representative of the Parks Committee joining in on that group after we get all of the data collection portion of it done. So thank you, we're right, we're on the same page with you. Diane, did you have any?
No, I didn't.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. I will move on to item number four. This is public comment for items of concern not on the agenda. Okay, please stand up, say your name and your address. And. Please do, yeah, and we'll just have you keep your comment to around three minutes.
It says three to five in the agenda.
Three to five.
Are you, who's going to be measuring the time?
I've got the time right now on the clock.
Okay, my name is Li Jiwei. I live at three seventeen Pine Street. This is a butternut squash. This is a spaghetti squash. I grew these in the alleyway last summer. I've been living at three seventeen Pine Street for more than ten years. When we moved in there, there were a bunch of trash trees in the alleyway. I cleaned them up, and I've been maintaining the alleyway in the form of a garden. Every summer I plant that. So this right here represents a meal for myself, my four children, and my wife. We eat produce from our garden. I have a space in my garage where I store this, and it well, cuts down our food budget throughout the year. So every spring about this time, I begin getting my garden ready. I get it out in front, I till up the alleyway and in my backyard. So I did that this year, and I, as the dirt was fresh and tilled up and soft, I put some logs out there. No one ever drives on that anyways. People are very courteous. People use the alleyway, but just as a reminder, this dirt is soft, be careful. I did that, and so that was on Tuesday evening after I got home from work, I did that. And then Wednesday, while I was at work, a person knocked on our door and was talking to my wife about that and how that can't happen. Anyways, when I got home, she told me about that, so I called the phone number of the car that I got for Public Works and had a conversation and stated that I know that that space is not mine, making no claim to any space in the alleyway. All I'm saying is I maintain it. I keep it up. It's, it doesn't look dirty or a gift, and I plant a garden there, and I assume the risk of planting the garden there. Like, I know if someone needs to, the police officer needs to go by there and has to drive there, I'm fine with that, or fire truck, or any other reason. Everybody, as I said, people are very courteous. They, in fact, many people told me as I'm gardening there, they see me, I love your garden, I think it's great that you're using that space. So I said that in my conversation, and he was told that I can't do that, and it's a law, and I'm not against laws. I think it's great to have laws, and they're important, and I said that I would take my chances, I guess, with planting my garden there, my efforts. And I was told, well, that's your choice. And I mentioned that other people have choices too. So the very next day, a load of gravel was dumped in the alleyway on the space that I'd been using in the garden, which is not in the roadway that is the accepted roadway. I'd love to share pictures if anybody's interested in seeing those. The roadway was not blocked by the garden that I did on the side, but the road mix was dumped there, steamrollers watered and flattened. And as near as I can tell, down the alleyway, in the next house down, a water meter cover was changed. I know my neighbor has been asking for that to be changed for years, several years. And I just find it really interesting that my garden was flattened and gravel was dumped on it the day after that conversation happened. It feels retaliatory and targeting to me. When anybody that wanted to could easily get by the guard or get by that space that I had tilled up, could easily get by. It's also interesting to me that on the other side of the alleyway, there's a tree much closer than ten feet from the center of the alleyway. Nothing happened to that tree, so it seems awfully targeted. Then nothing else happened. That whole alleyway between Third and Fourth Street, nothing, nowhere else did that happen. There were, there was trash bricks in the, within the ten foot, nothing happened to that. Only where I had tilled up my garden, road mix was dumped on it, and it was filed with a steamroller. And that feels retaliatory to me. So I make no claim to the space. I would also, I still plan to use that space. I'm going to plant my squash there again in. I'm assuming the risk. I know, I plant there, it could be ruined again. But I see no purpose for that to happen because it's already been, I mean, that part of the alleyway is better than most of our streets now. It was well taken care of, nice and flat, so I don't see why anything else would have to happen there, and I plan to do the same thing that I've done every year. Not in a I'm going after you type of way, but in a way, I'm going to use this space that's not used, and I use it for a good use, and I'm not abusing anything. I don't use pesticides, I don't use herbicides, I keep the weeds down. And that is my public comment. I'd love to answer any questions if anybody has any questions.
Thank you. That was perfectly five minutes. Appreciate you. I did receive your written comment and asking your photographs. And I appreciate you coming in tonight and giving your comments in person. I had intended to read it for you, but it was nice to hear you speak on behalf of it tonight. I I hear everything you're saying. I think there is discussion to be had about alleyways. There has been an effort to to clean up alleyways, and so I would like to take your comment tonight, work with Public Works and Community Development, and get back to you at a later date to have a further discussion.
Did you see the pictures also attached with that?
Say again?
Did you see the pictures that were attached?
Yes, I did. I did see.
So as far as cleaning up the alleyways, in my opinion, the alleyway was clean. There was no trash. There was nothing other than tilled dirt there. So as I said before, part of gardening the alleyway, in my opinion, is a part of maintaining the alleyway and keeping it clean.
Thank you for your comment.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions?
It's not a question and answer portion of the evening.
Okay.
But we do have your information, and we, we, you know, council members do have an opportunity to follow up with you because public comment was sent to council members, so there's an option to have further discussion.
I appreciate the accountability on that.
Thank you.
Here, could I just ask for the address to be repeated?
Yes.
Three seventeen Pine Street, just down the street.
The street here. Okay, great. Thank you.
Let me know how you say your name again.
Li Ji.
Li Ji.
Li Ji like Fiji.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Sir, go ahead. Say your name and your address.
Anyway, my name is Tom Garrett. I speak loud and clear. You can hear me, and I wish you guys would just say. So I live next door to Elise across the street. His garden doesn't bother me at all. It's fine. His problem, he didn't even shoot at me when I stole a couple of pumpkins out of there. I'm all for that. Whoever did that to him is ridiculous, should be fired, whatever it is. It was a stupid act, and it should never have happened. And that's the kind of stuff the city has to stop. That's all I have to say on that. I really came down here to give you a compliment. And I'm talking about this lady right here. She has written a great little newsletter. For the first time, I can actually see what's going on. It's truthful, it's clean, it shows both sides of the arguments, and she's doing a great job on that Bellevue Matters and the other things I've seen her her hand in, and I think Suzie's done just a wonderful job on that. And you guys should be very thankful. Now, it's going to be bad for you because you're going to have people taking an interest, and more of our old farts are going to figure out what's out going on over here, and it's probably going to be some sweeping changes, I imagine. But because there's growth, that gas station over there, nice little picture in the paper, there it was, a little thing for A T Vs and U T Vs, and it turned out to be a massive truck stop with a sewer dump station for every truck and camper coming out of here. Stupid, bad. This is what the kind of stuff you guys do down here that makes everybody in town wonder if you have your brains on. And we don't think some of you do.
Hey, sir, I don't think that's inappropriate.
So, yeah, whatever.
Well, I know, but you're.
None of you lived here except for Tom.
Yeah.
Excuse me, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Yeah, Diane's there.
That's okay. I just think with public comment.
About me, Tom, come on, I'm your neighbor.
Say disrespectful things when people are sitting here.
Yeah, you don't like to hear it. You know what I have to say. I understand that.
Yeah.
But you're going to hear it anyway, and you're going to hear it from the voters. Next time around, if we put together a little platform and get things going and just clean house with all this stuff. I don't know what you can do about that Maverick Station, but you can stop the next one, and you can slow down this growth. I wouldn't think this town should give a building permit out until that sewer system is paid for and straightened out. Anything else is stupid. It was stupid the way you put it in the first time. You guys didn't have that. I told you the first time, don't put the alleyway in the city. You don't want utilities down both sides. Dig out the whole alleys and do it right. Oh, we don't want to do that. We're going to get Harry Rinker to pay for it. Harry Rinker wasn't going to pay for it. He was smarter than you guys. So, you know, that's what kind of stuff that goes on. I'm tired of it. Doesn't matter much for me. I'm here four years, but my son does live here, and he's too busy to pay attention to this stuff. And so that's what you got. And I'm not happy. I'm happy it's her because she actually wrote some stuff down. I can see what's going on. You got a public work director who made himself his own job and then hired him for it, and it wasn't even in the paper. I mean, oh, here we got a new job, and anyone can apply. No, this guy made the job for himself and hired himself. This, this kind of stuff you do, you know better. You do know better, you too. You know, you know that, Tommy, you know it, and I know it, and you do, Diane. That's not a good thing to have that. Those jobs should be published, and they should be open for who wants to do it, have somebody with experience, have a list of people or candidates, and hire the best one. Maybe the guy was the best one. I don't know, but there was no, the system failed it.
Hey, Tom, don't forget that I'm 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 chilling City Council too, okay?
We go, Sean.
On.
Yeah, hey, Sean, how you doing, man?
Good.
Tom.
You see, I don't know what's going on.
That's okay. Do you mind repeating your last name for me one more time?
Excuse me?
Your last name for one more time.
I can't hear you. You don't speak loud enough.
Tom Perry. Your last name.
Perry, P. E. Double R. Y.
Thank you very much.
What's your address?
Your address.
Three oh nine Pine Street.
Three oh nine.
I've been there for fifty years. Most people kind of know you after you lived here for fifty years.
We just need it for the record, sir.
That's okay, you know.
Thank you.
The way it goes. I mean, I put the first computer in this place when they first opened up, you know, I used to help the old marshals get their act together and with a radio, they didn't even know how to use a radio. I used to have a big ham radio station over in my yard over there with the big towers. He remembers those. I used to talk to the world. Still, if it goes bad, I'm probably the only one that could talk to the world, but, you know. There you go. That's my line. Well, I shot my mouth off. Thank you for doing that stuff. You're doing a great job.
Thank you, Tom.
Yeah, the first one I've seen down here with IQ enough to do something like that, and I'm really happy. And, you know.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Perry. Thank you. Anyone else in City Hall with a public comment for items of agenda or items of concern not on the agenda?
I have a public comment.
Okay, please state your name and your address for the record.
Suzanne Reed, twenty four Moldrum Canyon Road. In early March, I contacted D E Q because there had been no project plans or project status documentation shared with residents about the drinking water project for close to a year. On March thirty first, in response to that inquiry, Tyler Fortunati, the D E Q Drinking Water Bureau Chief, wrote to his D E Q staff. It also sounds like Jeff's discussions with the city's engineers have conveyed that the final compliance deadline is still achievable at this time. So if they're confident in that, we'll use it in the second A C A S and provide new deadlines for the other milestones that fit within it. And yet, two weeks later, the April eleventh City Newsletter led with the mayor's statement that the Bellevue Water Project is compliant with our already amended D E Q agreement. That statement was part of the mayor's message to the residents about the April fourteenth Water Project presentation, the first presentation to the residents about the project in ten months. And yet, there was no documentation in the meeting packet that supported the mayor's compliance status statement or provided project details. A single document for a twelve million dollar project was provided, and when I requested additional documentation, I was informed that financial documents were not relevant for compliance matters, although a few were graciously added to the packet, and I was further told I should not contact staff directly to request materials. They would be provided by the mayor. I have received none of the documents I have requested from the mayor for well over one month, nor those promised during the four fourteen meeting. I will state again that I do not believe that Bellevue is in compliance with the existing D E Q A C A S, both because miscompliance items naturally invalidate most compliance agreements, and because the D E Q Drinking Water Bureau Chief said that we are not, that a second A C S will be created. And yet, the city has steadfastly maintained that we are, that no new agreement is needed, has sought to discredit me for not believing the city's statements, and continues to refuse to provide documentation about our compliance status. And it comes down to this. I do not believe you, and I do not believe anyone else should either. You have provided no reasons for me to believe you, and there is no reason for anyone to blindly trust what happens in these meetings, especially after the conduct of the mayor and council during the last meeting. During the April fourteenth meeting, mayor and council actions and statements uniformly conveyed to all Bellevue residents that this twelve million dollar project is being well managed, is compliant, and will not require a second A C A S. And when I refused to accept the unsupported declarations being made and assurances being offered because they were contrary to D E Q statements, I was berated and chastised for creating my own narrative. I was mocked for being a broken record because I continued to demand that the city get out from behind the curtain and give the residents the transparency they want and deserve, especially around this project. When I questioned the quality and value of the project document provided by Merrick, I was told I was being disrespectful and that the mayor found the document more than sufficient for the residents. How can this be true when the city requires far more documentation for a simple sign permit? A recent Maverick sign permit appeal contains fifteen pages of dimensions, summaries, graphic depictions, and implementation details. But City Hall wants the residents to be impressed by a single flow chart for their nine million dollars. When I brought up council fiduciary duty and concerns about loan requirements, residents heard from this council that reimbursement terms of the loan are not relevant because adverse situations aren't likely to happen. And yet, the terms are specific to possible land acquisitions from a landowner who currently will not let Bellevue access his property. So actually, an adverse outcome is just as likely as unlikely. Being prepared for contingencies is always important and should be a concern of any member of this community, especially elected representatives. When I brought up a need to know current details about the project, especially since previous details have led to concerns about pipe sizes and water rights, the residents heard from this council that we should simply let people do their job rather than be informed about missed deadlines, details about how the work is being done, and specifics about how money is being spent. When I addressed the claims made during the meeting that there would be no land purchases or easements, meaning that nearly one million dollars of the bond funding dedicated to those acquisitions may no longer be needed, what the residents did not hear is how the city is preparing to remove the funds originally earmarked for land acquisitions from the bond liability total. When I expressed concerns about project delays and lack of accountability around missed deadlines, I was asked, does this hurt you? And the answer is yes. It does, and it's something that any project manager or stakeholder should know without asking. It hurts all residents, and specifically for me, it interferes with the other ways in which I hope to serve the residents as an alderman. Because time is money, and because both financial and resource commitments reduce opportunities. Projects that drag on are used to excuse lack of progress in other areas. Projects that are struggling to meet deadlines require attention that could be spent on other things. So, yes, the residents are all hurt when a project is delayed for over one year, and when the delays are dismissed as insignificant because that suggests it will likely happen again. The absence of supporting documentation for city statements and justification for council efforts to discount or reject my questioning is alarming. Without proof of the city's declarations, the video of the April fourteenth meeting doesn't look like a passionate disagreement. It looks like a united effort to suppress the truth. It makes the Water Project Presentation look like it was intended to deceive the residents about the state of this project, and it raises serious ethical questions about the mayor's vigorous effort to discredit the comments and concerns I made based on D E Q statements. Trust is an essential aspect of governance and leadership, and without complete validation of city claims around this project, there cannot be and should not be any. The city must stop withholding documentation and information from the residents about this project, and it must publish the specific statements and documents that show the mayor's declarations that a second D E Q agreement is not necessary is true, and that Mr. Fortunati's statement that a second D E agreement is necessary is untrue. You will never succeed in bullying me into accepting false statements or into intentionally misleading my neighbors. You can suggest that residents don't want the transparency, integrity, and service from City Hall that I'm a broken record demanding for all residents equally. But without documentation that supports city declarations, the April fourteenth meeting looks a lot like an intentional effort to mislead the residents. When it didn't go exactly as planned, the city narrative required that non-bullied, excuse me, be discredited. It was unacceptable, unethical, and recorded for the public record. The project is overdue for proper oversight, and so I will again call on the mayor to adopt the resolution I submitted. And we'll submit again here. That creates multiple requirements to force a city to engage in timely and professional grade project status, financial, and exception reporting. And I hope that the residents can expect better from all of us going forward, and I repeat my calls for the city to provide the requested documentation that supports its statement. Thank you.
Thank you. I wanted you to complete that, so it was over time, so in the future, just keeping it to three to five minutes. I'm not going to go back and forth on this, but as I stated in my email to you, when I have the documents, all those documents will be sent to council and be made available as appropriate when I receive the documents from Merrick.
We should, I'm assuming based your comments on the documents. That's what I'm asking for, the.
This isn't a back and forth, but I just want to remind you that the email I sent, I said, I will.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry, just don't respond like I made a public comment, and I'm not going to be lectured about the public comment.
No, I just, I think when you are misinforming the public in public comment, I have a right to just let the public know that in email I did identify that I would be providing the documents to you that you requested on the April fourteenth meeting, and when I receive them from Merrick, they will be sent out. So I think that I have a right to say that. So. Any other public comment on Zoom or at the table here?
Mayor, Chris Johnson, Public Works Director. I'd like to point out the effort and the time that City Street Crew has been put in the last couple of weeks. We're actually getting swept in the mornings. Today was great with the rain coming down to keep the dust basement at ease. We've got the hot wagon going and filling as potholes as we can. Again, some of this are just Band-Aids, but we're trying to get out there as much as we can and really support the work that they're doing out there and the effort they're putting in.
Thank you. At this time, seeing no more hands in City Hall and none on Zoom, I will go ahead and close public comment. And we'll move on to item number five, the consent agenda. Well, note that for questions or.
Do you want to go through it one by one like you do?
I think you get out for sake of time. Any questions on the consent agenda?
I would like the approval of minutes to be reevaluated based on that public comment that we received.
I'll second that.
So in order to that, would we want to pull them?
Yeah.
Let's make a motion.
Put it on the next agenda.
I make a motion to pull the minutes presented in the consent agenda.
Second, sorry, Suzanne, so I made a motion. Second.
Welcome. Councilmember Openoff, I'm sorry, Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
Councilmember Mahoney.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Council President Shay.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other topics of discussion for the consent agenda?
I have none. Thing, I just wanted to say thank you to Sherry for putting together a calendar for us as we're working on the budgets and.
I second that.
Except for not including, you know. I still think it'd be great.
So, Mayor, I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
Council President Shay.
Yes.
Councilmember Bergen.
Yes.
Councilmember Mahoney.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
I'm going to move on to item six. There's a public hearing action. I continue from April fourteenth, twenty twenty five. An application for a lot line adjustment for lots one through six, block ninety six of the Bellevue Townsite original plot. The proposed lot line adjustment will reconfigure the existing six parcels into three parcels and include a request for waivers from co-repairments. Brian Parker, Community Development Director.
All right, yes, thank you. Brian Parker, Community Development Director. This item was publicly announced for the prior meeting. Due to some last minute tweets to the application, we wanted to get one more meeting to get a hearing on this, and then it turned out the applicant's team could not be present for this meeting tonight, so we are requesting one more continuation to. So we are requesting one more continuation to the May twelfth meeting.
Make a motion that we continue this public hearing on the lot line adjustment.
Second for discussion. I, I had the opportunity to speak with Councilmember Bergen earlier today. And as I understand it, Tom, I'm speaking for you and I'm very uncomfortable.
I'm happy to speak for myself.
Then you go right up in there.
I, this is great, propose for continuation to May twelfth. I'm not gonna be able to attend that meeting, but this is an application that's of interest to me. Of course, it's land use application, but also, you know, it's just a particularly interesting location and. So I just put that out there, I guess, that I'm not gonna be able to attend. I don't know kind of what the protocol might be about whether they continue to the twenty-sixth, I guess, would be the follow-up meeting date. Twenty-seven, the next day, Tuesday. And so anyway, and I don't know whether there's been a communication with the applicant and their schedule and, you know, all that. I appreciate is a, is a factor, but. That's kind of my reality is all I'm saying.
You're done, he, Councilmember Bergen, I spoke with the applicant this afternoon, I left voicemail with the applicant this afternoon. Should say requesting, passing this information along, you requesting that we moved to the twenty-seventh. I've not heard back, so. Out of abundance of caution, I would recommend we begin at the twelfth. And then if we do hear back from the applicant, it's fine, and they're fine, we'll be at twenty-seventh, we can still do that at that time.
Yeah, understand that it's sort of a late disclosure.
So, so there is.
Is that gonna be table? Okay, I wanna make sure that discussion is complete back.
I'm sorry.
If discussion is complete, Amy, will you give a vote?
I'm Councilmember Bergen.
No.
Council President Shay.
Yes.
Councilmember Mahoney.
Yes.
No. Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number seven. Question that I'd like to read, this is a proclamation for Mental Health Awareness Month, beginning twenty twenty-five. Proclamation for Mental Health Awareness Month twenty twenty-five. Whereas, mental health and well-being are essential to the overall health, resilience, and quality of life for all citizens of Bellevue, enabling individuals to engage in productive activities, maintain fulfilling relationships, and effectively cope with life's challenges. And whereas, mental health challenges are among the most common health conditions in the United States, affecting one in five adults and one in four children annually, and significantly impacting not only the individuals directly affected, but also their loved ones and community. And whereas, the residents of Bellevue are known for their compassion, strength, and collective spirit, consistently showing support for one another and rising together in times of difficulty. And whereas, Mental Health Awareness Month provides an important opportunity to honor the diverse strengths and abilities of our citizens and to highlight the ways in which mental well-being contributes to a vibrant, healthy, and connected community. And whereas, by promoting mental health education, resources, and open conversations, we can break the negative perception that surrounds mental illness and foster an environment in which all individuals feel empowered to seek help and support without fear of judgment. And whereas, access to care, including prevention, early intervention, treatment, and recovery resources is a priority, and collective efforts such as the Mental Wellbeing Initiative of Blaine County exemplify our region's commitment to a coordinated and inclusive approach to improving mental health outcomes. And whereas, all sectors of our community, including local government, schools, businesses, healthcare systems, and nonprofit organizations, share the responsibility to raise awareness, promote mental wellness, and ensure that those experiencing mental health challenges are met with compassion and meaningful support. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the mayor and common council of the city of Bellevue, do hereby proclaim the month of May twenty twenty-five as Mental Health Awareness Month in Bellevue. We honor the strength and resilience of our citizens and encourage every member of our community to prioritize mental well-being, ask for help, engage in supportive dialogue, and contribute to a healthier, more connected Bellevue for all. Thank you. Just a thank you for Tammy Davis, the Crisis Hotline, and the other entity.
I'd be suicide prevention.
By the Suicide Prevention Alliance for contributing to proclamation. Thank you. Moving on to item eight, full of business. This is the continuation of the Public Works Request for Funds for a motor grader. Chris Johnson, Public Works Director, presenting.
Good evening, Council, Chris Johnson, Public Works Director. You asked me to go back, and there was some questions about legitimacy of the bids and the bidding process, the RFP and everything. So what we've done, to quote I've gotten from Caterpillar, falls under competitive bidding process where another entity has put out contracts, they're awarded at a national, federal level, and state levels. And this allows us to kind of circumvent the competitive bid process because these have already been guaranteed at a discounted rate, and they meet the requirements of doing a individual city competitive bid for this equipment. I reached out to John Deere to see if they'd had anything. They did not get back to me, and I could not find anything on two of the websites I was recommended to get on that list of different bids. And these bids, very common to use it in all over municipalities. We even have one current that we use for the lease on our loader. So it's nothing that we have not done before. The documentation shows the contracts, the federal contracts that are accepted by the state and allow us to do this through this process. Speaking with Cat, the quotes that we did get, we got two, one was for a hundred, one fifty, all-wheel drive. The other one was for a one twenty, so it comes down to horsepower. The price isn't that much different when you break it down. And we know that different snow levels, wet snow. The one fifty is the one that I recommend, that you will not, it will not be underpowered in where we can snow out towards the springs or out towards the reservoir, the water tank. I also did kind of a price breakdown, the total. Tom, I misspoke last, last meeting. We thought that the, the bid for John Deere had everything together and like the Caterpillar was the, the equipment was separated up. But that's, the equipment is part of the bid for that four thousand six hundred and seventy, four hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, seven hundred and forty-six dollars. It's broken down into seven annual payments of fifty-one thousand one hundred and six forty-three at a five-point-four-nine percent interest rate. The final payment, and this is where the lease becomes more, more common with municipalities are doing. Instead of purchasing with the final, you're paying the three hundred and fifty-seven, seven hundred and forty-five dollars and one cents, you enter into a new lease and you keep your budget going where you have new equipment with a new warranty, and you don't get twenty-year-old equipment that's dilapidated, unreliable. Mr. Bergen also provided me with a, he said he found in Mountain Home, a used motor grader. I called the number that he provided. It was a nineteen eighty-four, it did not have any of the bee plow or the snowing that we will need. Again, it was not a all-wheel drive, it was actually a rear wheel, rear, rear, rear.
Rear-wheel drive, that one.
So you break it down between the fifty-one thousand one hundred and six for the twelve-month payments. It comes down to four thousand two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and eighty-seven cents a month, broken down into three departments that will be using it, talking one thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars and sixty-three cents per apartment. I guarantee he's a seven-year, three-hundred-thousand-hour government fail-safe warranty. If we did want to cut corners a little bit and go with the lesser horsepower model, the monthly payment by, or the monthly payment by apartment, it would be one thousand three hundred and forty-five dollars, eighty-nine cents. Currently in water and wastewater, you can check into the budget provided or the treasures report. There's items in both water and wastewater for auto or equipment purchases for twenty and I think thirty thousand and one, twenty thousand and thirty thousand. We just have to go through our numbers on the street side, and I'm getting the budget from Shelly tomorrow to review and start allocating where I think that it was the. I did look at a few other options on used equipment, but much like the one Mr. Bergen brought to us, we know the monster we have, we don't know the monster we'd be buying used. Anything prior to twenty twenty is still around two hundred and fifty thousand, and how we would finance that, I'm not sure. I know we could do it similar to the fifty-five-hundred truck that we have where we found a private bank that was willing to purchase it, then lease it back to us, and then we buy it for a dollar where they sell it for value and we get the return funds. You know, you can get donated equipment from Sun Valley here and there, but it doesn't always meet our needs. But, you know, having equipment that we can depend on, that's under warranty, that we're not continually having to your own maintenance and repairs on at our own cost in the long run, it's the model that all municipalities are going to leasing it. This is what we do with the Marshals vehicles, we lease them for seven years, five years.
Mine's on a three-year with a dollar buyout, if you mean.
Is this a lease?
Yes.
This was a purchase.
It's a lease, and then you have the purchase option if you wanna do the balloon payment, or else you just revolve back into a new lease with a new vehicle. And so you just make the adjustments in your budget. And you know, if we've done it for the seven years, it's easy to keep rolling it over versus what are we gonna do just with that balloon payment, how are we gonna pick that up? And then how long are we gonna hold on that equipment? Can we hold on to it for ten years and try to sell it? Or can we rely on new equipment that we can depend on year after year, knowing what we're paying for it?
I need to come. The lease is the standard. That's how cities get their major equipment. That's how it's made affordable for us to be able to get what we need. We don't have half a million dollars to just lay out and patch or even two hundred and fifty to purchase a piece of equipment that we don't know what we might be getting. So the lease is a great way for us to have what we need, we account for it, you know, each budget year, and continue to have the equipment that we need. It just makes it so you don't end up with nineteen eighty-some equipment that you can't do anything with. And what was, what was not helpful about the catchum? They got a motor grader at the end of last year for their bidding that you reviewed. That was not the similar equipment, or it was the other bids that you reviewed were more in keeping with your?
I'm not sure what you're referencing with.
Well, you, you, you know, you've got these, you know, referring to bids that had already been made, and I was just saying that Ketchum had done it, and I was just curious if there was a reason that to have referenced or it looks like it might even be a little cheaper. Obviously, it's not twenty twenty-five, but Ketchum's also a city with a forty-million-dollar budget. And we have what, a three-and-a-half-million-dollar budget? And we don't, this is not currently budgeted. I think that there's no, and maybe you've provided and I didn't see it, but a large measure of this is, needs to be looked at for ROI and even beyond the fact that it's not currently budgeted, right? We don't currently have the money for this. But I don't know how we can make a decision without an understanding of how many hours and how it's used. If it doesn't make more sense to, you know, rent something, if it's used primarily for snow, why not just rent it for six months a year from something local? I think there are a lot of things that we just haven't, we haven't had a chance to look at that's part of the decision-making process of why this is the best path forward for a three-and-a-half-million-dollar budget. So that, so I appreciate that, that we've complied with, with the law. But one, it's not budgeted, and two, I don't know how we could evaluate the need for this without more documentation.
We rented a, the tool kit, so it's a small implement that'll change out from a bucket to a snow blower. Has three or four pieces. When we went into a new lease, it took them additional six months to get the leased one. And in that time, we had to rent our old one back from them. And so we were spending, I wanna say about five thousand dollars a month to lease that.
I think it was six.
Six thousand dollars a month, and that's just a small piece of equipment. So if you just times that by, say, I would say easily double that for a greater rental. So ten months, six months at ten thousand dollars a month, you're gonna be paying sixty thousand in here, at least we have it year-round now.
Well, I had, the prices I had seen were five thousand, but I, again, without, you know, you, you may have gone through all of this, but I, I can't see that, and so I have the, the questions. And again, it, it seems like something that, notwithstanding your design, your understanding that these things can take a long time to be delivered, it's not currently budgeted. And I, I just, like I said, I don't know how it can be evaluated against that amount of money. I don't understand exactly how water and wastewater use the equipment. And yet, maybe paying.
Right now.
Well, I just, I'm not, I, I think, you know, I'm not a big like word person, I'm not trying to chat, I just, there's nothing, I'd, I'd be happy to review it in a separate.
But part of the discussion is an opportunity to ask your doctor's questions.
I'm sorry, so how many hours does the waste and water works, water and wastewater department use the machine and thing what?
So if you haven't noticed, we have what are called meter vaults, valves, and wastewater manholes that are speckled around the city. Typically, they're in the middle of the road or off to the side of the road. And so in the wintertime, six months out of the year when we're moving snow, that motor grader allows us to peel back down to the base layer, to the roads, so we can access those in case of a water emergency, a wastewater emergency, or just to make this routine. We also have a spring system that needs to get monitored daily right now. And even though if we may get up the skater to do it and the equipment that we're not having to manually insert learning pucks, two miles that road is paved or graded by the county, the last mile and a half is up to us to plow, to get to access to our spring. And the trucks can get out there. Most times, we got to our third snowfall, the burns get too big for the, the trucks to be able to plow the burns. So we have to take the grader out there, whiting it down, use the snow wing to smooth it out the top of the burns. So then, the next two, three weeks and the next couple of snowstorms, we could then use the smaller trucks to push the snow out of the way. We also have about a half-mile road down at the sewer treatment plant, plus the main parking area that we use it to keep those roads open and clear so we can access that. And when the plant's operation, even with the legions in operation, we have to be down there at least once, twice a day, every day. Water tank, fairly steep grade. Trucks, again, we can get up there in the light snows, but if we get wet heavy snows, we need a piece of equipment that can push it off, can push it up the hill, and then off the side of the hill and level it out. So that piece of equipment, even though we're clearing the roads with it, it gives us access to our infrastructure every day during winter. If we, I would have to ask Casey to come up with the total hours that we've used this year. But I would estimate well over fifty to eighty hours of use just this season alone. And that's not including what Lunsford did with their grader on Main Street. And at one point, if we can get enough staff and we get people and the equipment that we need to do our job, we can move away from the Lunsford contract and start taking control of our own Main Street. But to do that, we need a piece of equipment like this to make it happen. So we're looking long-term, we're looking at, you know, but we still have our staffing constraints and our equipment constraints. You know, but we still have our staffing constraints and our equipment constraints.
I, I have a question, Matt. Chris, is there an opportunity to use this piece of material, uh, equipment during the summer?
Yes, council member, Casey Rachel only used it about two weeks ago. We have second street that has partials, parts of part patches of unpaved. It'll be two or three blocks that are unpaid and it'll be a couple of boxes paid. And then there's the south end of second street all the way down where he was able to go rework the road. So he took the pile on each side, brought them into the middle, then he came back and smoothed it out so the water actually ran off instead of running pond in the middle of the roads. So he was using it for about. Two days doing that last week and then right now on pine. At right as it crests the top and turns into Muldoon Canyon Road where it's been washed out, there's no road base there. We'll use it to keep all the puddles best we can. We use our other vehicles to spread more gravel and try to put it in. But we, we use it all year round. We have to maintain the road down at the wastewater treatment plant. It'll get washed forty and.
We're able to use that to grade.
They use it quite often and the alleyway right here, which I greatly appreciate.
It is a larger piece of some of the alleys we can't get it through, but anything we can, we try to improve them, so.
And it's the best piece of equipment for all of the different uses like you stated.
It's the most diverse piece of equipment that we can, because we can, in the winter time, we can. We don't have to use the wing, but the wing and the plow are for the winter time use, but the main belly grader. It's probably the best all around equipment that we can use instead of having three or four specialty equipment. It's the best all around and most widely used. County has probably four or five of them and they use them year round. For county dirt roads or county plowing. Their, their primary piece of equipment in, in most of the mountain and municipalities.
And the analysis is that say doubling the commitment from Lunsford or whatever it's called. To do this work is not, is not financially viable to have to increase their work and then. Sometimes maybe some years have light snow years, so we're only in for forty thousand dollars for snow maintenance for, or. Eighty thousand dollars. I was just wondering about the analysis.
The last two years we've had very, I would say relatively light snow years. And we have pushed that fifty thousand dollar contract both years. Right now, I think in the treasurer's board set forty seven and change.
I have a con, in twenty twenty-three, we spent a hundred and thirty thousand on contractors for snow.
And that was in addition to the work that the city was doing as well.
That was prior to actually getting the equipment that we have now, our trucks. That's how much we were having to spend. To hire out contractors to do a lot of what we're doing now.
We didn't have trucks.
We didn't have any, we had none.
Which I, 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 yes, thank you.
Chris, you mentioned some numbers where you kind of were breaking down, okay, there are multiple departments that are going to take advantage of this piece of equipment or. Benefited by this piece of equipment and sort of broke down the numbers a little bit. Could you walk through that again?
I think there's a printed document on your table there, but I can't read them also. It was an additional document that was.
It was handled up at the time of the meeting.
It's, I, I put this together this afternoon thinking that it, they kind of legitimized why I think that the department stand up for it. Based off of our current budget numbers and like I mentioned. In the treasurer's report.
And this piece of equipment wouldn't be. Part of this year's budget, right? It's not even going to start till next year.
No, this is the reason I'm bringing it to you now is it's taken about eight months to get one. So if we order one now, we should have it right before December. And so it'd be in the next year's budget process. It's wastewater. We have auto or equipment purchase, budgeted thirty thousand. We have not used any of that money this year.
It's twenty.
We have twenty thousand budgeted, it's a. Line item, auto purchase for equipment, auto or equipment purchase. Two hundred twenty five eight one six oh, so third one from the bottom. So those two departments. I've got the funds already set aside in this year's budget if I, if we were going to compare. What next year's budget could look like and then I have to do some, sit down with Shelley and go over the streets budget and where we can move stuff around. I've had some special with the mayor about these budgets and. And continue to try to carry it over. We put, we budget, we budget this money for equipment, for different things. And we don't have contingencies in here and so there are contingencies with, we do need that money in there because much like the back truck. Where it failed, we had a major pump break. It's a half million dollar piece of equipment and we're able to get the part repaired. With the parts and labor, it was right around forty thousand dollars, just over forty thousand. So we need the contingencies there, I understand that, but we want to use as much money as we can that's budgeted for. For the stuff that is budgeted for, so we're not having to reallocate. That's the way I understand the budget process to work. We're doing our best, like Shelley and I are going to sit down and start. Count our first dream list and what we're going to propose to you for the next year for my five departments, so.
If this is a lease and maybe this is a silly question, do we depreciate that? The auditor, yeah, he takes care of all that.
And what will you have to forego when all this money is spent on that one piece of equipment?
Well, yes. If I'm looking at the numbers right and I haven't allocated everything, but just between the water and wastewater department. It's going to cost seventeen thousand, just over that per year for each of those departments. That's equipment or auto purchase twenty thousand dollars, so it wouldn't be foregoing anything there. And then on the wastewater side, thirty thousand dollars. At seventeen thousand, so I still have another fourteen thousand there that I'm not foregoing anything.
What was that money originally budgeted for that you just didn't want to use it for?
Auto and equipment purchases. So if I need a new truck, if we need. Yeah. Some years we may not need to buy equipment and I'd like to save up a couple of years to get a valve exercising chair. It has a back truck backing capabilities and it has. An apparatus that goes down to all the valves. It opens them up, it closes them, cleans all the muck out of the bottom of them. And prolongs the life of those valves. So one, they work when they either shut off the water or shut off. Anything to wastewater and it cleans them out and technically we should be on like at least a. A rotation where we exercise a quarter of the city every year. So every four years we'd be going through all the valves of all the city. If we had more staff and more time, you know, try to increase that to, you know, every two years we go through the entire city. We start the north half and then we do the south half. But this is equipment that we've looked at in the past that's been overlooked and we haven't. Bought and told, well, you can do it by hand. It's not a big deal, you know? It kind of is a big deal when you're trying to move a eight inch valve, a quarter inch per turn. Fifty, sixty turns to get that thing open and then back close. So it takes time and effort. But we don't have, we waste on other stuff when we go, we work, use for other stuff. So to waste some of the time there when we can buy a piece of equipment that could assist us. Just like this, the motor grader, it saves us time, it does an efficient job of climbing city. And it's the only way we can trim down the snowbanks. When these snow piles start getting up. Three, four foot high, then they start encroaching into the middle of the roads and our roads start turning into one-way streets. This gives us the power and the, the tools to push it back. Lay it back down so we can actually see around the stop signs. It's. Safer for the public, it's safer for the marshal.
You mentioned nine month delivery, is that what you anticipated?
Yes. February one or January thirty first. And that could be changing with the, with the tariffs and everything else, so they might have some on stock, they may not. But I believe Sun Valley purchased, got a piece of equipment. They ordered in July, they were supposed to get it by December first. It didn't come in until February, March this year.
Well, I'm not going to dispute that, you know, I watched a lot of Mighty Machines and I know it's an. Amazing piece of equipment and it'd be nice to have. I just do not see how we can, I, I just don't have enough information over the overall budget. I, I think it's a little surprising to me that there's so much loose money running around in budgets from last year. When we're struggling to fill the potholes and straighten the signs and put lines on our own streets and so. Until I can, until it can be put, I would love to consider it as part of the upcoming budget season. Because I think it's a great piece of equipment. I, I would love to help you find used. Vehicles like on Richie List and things like that, which I know Tom had looked for too. But, and I, I think it has to be part of the, the next budget to really understand how much money there is. We're, we have a three and a half million dollar budget and we're behaving at least in and out, not behaving, there's. There are questions about how we can afford something like this or at least that we need to be looking at the opportunity costs. Of spending this, it looks like it's equally dispersed over departments, which I can't imagine actually use it the same number of hours. And yet there has to be creative math, but I, I don't think it can be done until, at least by me, until it's part of the next budget. Cycle and there's more information about the departments in general.
I would like to comment on that too. So the budget goes into effect October first and so we are just hitting the six month period, correct?
Yeah, we just hit halfway.
So October, November, we're starting to hit snow in November, December, January, February, March. So we have about five months there where can't be potting, you can't be paving on roads, you can't do that, what you're doing, you're moving snow. Alright, so it's not like we, we just have all this extra funds floating around. We're finally into the time of the season where we start using some of those funds and we've already purchased our first load of. Asphalt mix. We pre-prepared to get us, got here as soon as we can because we know there's going to be supply shortages. Speaking of all the road and bridge company or all the other road and bridge utilities. At the North Side meeting last month, they're already saying that there's just not enough chip out there. People cannot make it fast enough for the demand that's needed and then again, oil. You can't just have a lot of it laying around or else it starts hardening up and so you want to estimate how much you can use, how quickly you can use it and then. Source what you can. So we still have quite a bit of time in the next six months to use the funds that we have set aside. Now, we don't have any big purchases when I quit on, on trucks and equipment. On this budget, but we put it in there in case we, we needed it. Or decided that we had enough staff for another truck. Now we're starting to get more staff on. I'm looking at two more candidates here soon. Potentially, I'm looking at a couple interns and so now we're going to start running short of vehicles that we can use day to day. So please understand, we're only six months in, there's plenty of time to use the budget money.
I have a question in regards to how the sales agreement and contract can work. If we were to move forward with the, the lease, is there a down payment? Would be my first question.
No down payment.
No down payment. And is there a cancellation clause, cancellation fee, anything like that? If we were to commit to ordering it and. In our budgeting season, we deemed that we didn't have the budget for it, could we then cancel the order?
I would have to, I would have to double check on the full lease agreement. What I presented is. The quotes for the prices to see if I could even get traction with this. If it isn't worth our time to even see what our contract's going to look like. And I could do that. I'm sure there is. I, I, we could probably reference our, our loader that's on the same type of lease. I'm sure there was an opt out or if it was not delivered by time. We had to have some leeway.
Because what I'm understanding is you're bringing this to council, knowing that there's a very long lead time. From when we execute the agreement to when the piece of equipment comes. And the, the cost wouldn't, wouldn't begin. Uh, uh, until we receive the piece of equipment.
Correct.
So we're talking about future budget, future expenditure. So. My curiosity would be if we were able to move forward with this. Understanding that it will come in the next budget season and we can look at all the information. And that it was deemed, we didn't want to move forward with it, could we then cancel the agreement?
Uh, it's a great question.
A, a potential path forward.
And I, I, I think this is a little bit of deja vu because I seem to recall asking at our last meeting if. If we had to do some kind of a down payment on this piece of equipment. Although I don't recall asking about a cancellation fee. And it's clearly stated in your staff report, Chris, that this is something that we'll work on in this upcoming budget. Correct?
Correct.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
What, what do you mean by will work in the upcoming budget?
Work on.
I would assume we'll be, we'll be discussing this as a line item in the next budget.
Because it would be good to maybe have our attorney review what would be a potential contract and a potential lease to make sure.
Am I correct in hearing that the potential next steps for staff would be then to look into the lease agreement? And see if there's an opt out in there? Or so it, it sounds like there's interest in potentially pursuing this piece of equipment with the appropriate budgeting and.
Just like.
Understanding.
Just like all previous leases that we have, we go in, we ask for the lease agreement. Company provides it for it, it comes into a council packet, the council reviews it. There's some discrepancies or questions in the lease agreement. We can either go back to the vendor and say, hey, we want to make these adjustments or we don't feel comfortable with this. Is there a workaround or else, okay, this satisfies our. Our, our requirements and then you guys vote on to move forward with a lease or not. So even if you make a decision, we're, we're still not making an execution assist, decision to purchase this tonight. This would be to see if it's even worth my effort to move forward and getting a lease agreement, see it, so you guys can review that. And so it would probably be. That's third or the second meeting in May before we would even be considering executing a lease. So our, our, an order, execute the lease next year.
So that second meeting would be May twenty seven, as I understand it, the twenty sixth is Memorial Day. And I would just want to make certain that not only the council has an opportunity to review this lease. But that our legal counsel has an opportunity to go over it thoroughly. As, as Tim stated.
It's what we typically do, so I have.
Yeah.
Objections.
And if I can comment, we will be right, starting right then with our budgeting workshops.
Yeah.
That next night.
Is anyone on council in opposition of not being the next step for our public works director?
I am not in opposition of that.
No.
And then I'll just say me and Casey had a conversation. The piece of equipment we do have, it'll work until it doesn't. I mean, Casey. Feels that it is time to upgrade it and, but he knows, man, it'll work probably as long as he's here. So we've got another year out of tops, maybe two if we're lucky, but I think we're lucky that we got through this season with it. So if, even if we do not, if this gets delayed and you want to wait till the budget is approved and everything. I'm still going to be putting this into the budget. I'm still going to be asked to move forward with it at some point. And so we may not have it this winter, but I sure as heck would love to have it by next winter at the very minimum.
Is it possible too to get, have anyone? And I don't mean beside Casey because he's not qualified, because I know he is, but for our records. And for transparency or what have you, when we're. Showing the citizens that. showing the citizens that that this is what the piece of equipment we have. It has been looked at by Cat or John or whatever, the, you know, the company, they have given us like taking your vehicle in, they've given us a review of it.
Two on the car facts report on it.
But but one that is, can, we can officially have, and then that way we're, we're actually also looking at this from a a financial management, you know, good financial management policy that we reviewed this, we have this. We know it works, but here's the downfalls of it, and here's what could be expected to be done to it to keep it operational, et cetera. Is that something we could?
It don't hold, all it takes is money, I just call the cat ref, we can come have a service evaluation done on it. I can have that, and Casey can bring it up, and you guys can have a visual inspection on that next council meeting. You can see what type of stick affair it's in. Whatever you like, it's it's can happen.
I mean, I can, I'm not gonna direct you to do that.
It's, the council gives me direction, so if
The council, this is the opportunity, so staff is looking for direction at this time on this. So collectively, yeah, collectively, council, if you'd like to come to a decision of the direction to give staff on this on this piece of equipment, that that's where we're at in this discussion.
Uh, may I, I would ask, are you asking for a motion to to give Chris direction?
No, I think I was, I think we're just, Tammy was kind of talking about some ideas about direction. I think it makes a lot of sense, but I think perhaps maybe more advantageous. I I I don't think there's any reason to doubt, and we certainly know that the machine is old and that a new machine would be better. I don't really, you know, replace my machine, I don't think that's the 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 dispute. There are questions of our, you know, fiscal responsibility. I think it would be helpful, Chris, when you come back and for you, what you're talking about in terms of the residents, what can you show the residents? That you've exhausted these other, you know, we looked at this, and these are the ones that are available to us that are used, that were at this price point. We got all excited and they're really not there, or somebody shot a hole in all the tires and those don't work. So some sort, that's what you're talking about, something to show that there was due diligence in deciding that this amount of money had to be spent rather than three hundred and fifteen thousand for a used machine or or that we decided not to rent for six months because, to your point, those costs were prohibitive. I think that type of transparency is, is builds on your your car facts. I don't know that we'll have to prove too much.
That sounds like comparative research of used vehicles, is that what I'm hearing?
Just, just, just saying, why do we have to spend this much? What are the other options?
A assessment of the life of the current piece of equipment. Those are the two things I'm hearing.
I I mean, appreciate the idea, you know, if the contract says we can back out three months into the assembly process or whatever, then, okay, that's good. Uh, cuz I I honestly have still some anxiety about maybe the size of this. Uh, I appreciate equipment and 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 maybe the size of the of the request is fine. But it's cut out of context with what we have to do with the budget. And and so by late May, we will be into that process and we'll have a better sense of, yeah, this is something that is realistic within the budget, or not really, can't can't be, it's too much. Um, and I don't know that yet. And that's why I guess I continue to have a little anxiety about the request, honestly. But if there is a, if there's an out, then, okay, let's pursue that, you know, cuz I can certainly appreciate the timing is problematic for this kind of purchase when you're working in the wintertime primarily, because it's piece of equipment. So if 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 the opt out is something we see in a lease and gives us some way forward, then, okay.
I just, I appreciate those comments, but I also did wanna point out, point out that the Bellevue way for the last twenty, thirty years has been to get something from ITD that may or may not work, that may or may not need repairs. Sun Valley is, I believe, discussing the donation of a couple trucks where they just did on their last meeting. That will provide some additional benefits to the city. Maybe have some power equipment on it too, but we have to replace a drive shaft on one of them. They already purchased the drive shaft, but it should be probably a couple thousand, five thousand to get it installed properly. But we get this whole equipment. What gives me anxiety are the trucks down there that don't have parking brakes, but we're still having to use them because it's the only, it's the only dump truck that we have. We have a bucket truck that we got from the city Haley that probably the reason we got it is it doesn't meet OSHA standards because it's technically a crane, and then they're supposed to be evaluated and assessed every year on their operational ability, and that one probably hasn't been done in years. But we get by that because as a city, we don't fall under OSHA. And so it's time that the city steps and starts getting on track with what all the other municipalities are doing and buying the right equipment for their staff to make sure they can do the work that's asked of them to a standard that's asked of them and equipment that they're safe in and can complete the task asked of them.
And I'm not disputing anything that you're saying, I mean, I completely appreciate that and and the the staff need equipment to do the job. But, you know, there's, it's in the context of a larger budget, it seems to me that it's appropriate to evaluate it and do what we can in all those respects to try and upgrade that equipment, I completely respect that. So
Okay, so it sounds like that lease agreement as well would be that item that we're talking about.
Kind of consequential.
Okay. Um, do you have any more questions for the council at this time?
No, I will follow up with, copy what the lease agreement would look like. Uh, I will do some competitive, this is one, one issue that we're gonna have with a used piece of equipment. I can go to different sites and I can get their prices that are advertised, and I can give you those numbers. But then, since it's over a hundred thousand dollars, we have to put it out to a competitive bid, and we don't know what piece of equipment we're gonna get on those bids or what company's gonna what we're gonna get back, then we'll have to go, we'll get a bid in from a used place. We'll have to go visit the vehicle, if we can, if it's even within traveling distance to inspect it for ourselves to see if something that we even can trust. But I will look at some used vehicles, get some price quotes on those, and so
Kind of like the car facts.
Yeah. Someone come on, evaluate.
And evaluation.
I mean, again, I presented that if the rest of the council didn't feel or that an evaluation of our current and then not because I wanna keep it or don't wanna use it, I just wanna say to the point of here's what we have, this is why we're investing in a new one, this is the life of it, here's all the Band-Aids that are attached to it. And this is why, and and you, we can all say, it's a nineteen eighty eight. Unfortunately, there are a lot of people in this community that still drive around and operate pieces of equipment that old. So I only wanna make it that this is something we, a step we did, we looked at it, it made, made sense and we, we
It's also a benefit for the shop because we get somebody there that can assess it, and maybe he sees something that's wrong that we can need to fix before this next season. So it's preventive maintenance, it's, it's not, it's not out of sight of our budget. Uh, we'll get somebody in here, evaluate it, and present what their findings are, it's, it's too easy.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
So, um, at this time, it's an action item on that, on our old business, but
I'd say continue it till
Our May twenty seventh?
Well, we'll continue it. Till the May, the mid-May or seventeen.
We've got the twelve and we have the twenty seventh, I'd say.
I should have, I should be able to release by the twelve, but you can, you can have to review.
Okay.
And then, so continue it till the twelfth, and then we can review the lease and continue until the twenty seventh for a final.
He won't be here at the top, but I can make sure he has.
Yeah, it's spelled out, seems like that.
Sounds wonderful, so I take a motion to continue it.
I would move to continue this discussion with respect to the purchase slash lease of a motor grader. Um, for more information to our May twenty seven city council meeting.
I got it. Second.
Senator David?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Mahoney?
Yes.
Senator Bergen?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, at this time, I'm gonna call a short five minute recess, and we'll reconvene and move on to our new business section. Patience, um, I will go ahead and call the meeting to order, it is seven P M. We are moving on to item nine, this is new business. And we'll get started with nine A. This is the consideration and approval of resolution number twenty five dash one three, authorizing the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding by and between the city of Bellevue and Idaho Ranch to establish terms and conditions under which the owner will allow access to and over Idaho property to complete preparation of the preliminary engineering report. Rick, would you like to present this?
Sure, so we get our water from the springs out there, seems free, the water percolates up and we collect it through a system PVC and, I know, it's, it's not very high tech out there, but that system itself needs to be maybe re-activated a little bit, and there's a question of where it exists in relation to the road. And DEQ says we can't have stuff within the speed of the road. I think we're getting our three CFS from the collection site, and so it's just a matter of where this, our collection sites are in relation to the road and a bunch of other things. And the other part of the project is removing that water main from the spring over to the road, and to do that, we need to have land surveys done out there. And so in order to get those land surveys done, we need to get access to Idaho Ranch, and that's what this MOU does. And once we get those land surveys, and there's some other things that Mary thinks we need um, or may not be, depending on what you find with the land survey. They can prepare their preliminary engineering report, which in my mind is can decide what the final action is gonna be on this project, and then decide how to implement that project. And so that's what this MOU is. I think it's pretty straightforward.
So this resolution, as I understand it, is just saying we are going to enter into an MOU, and the next part of this is the actual MOU with the details?
And then, and yeah, and the Idaho, Mr. Morowitz, in exchange for the, for the land, he wants to be included in all the discussions and and he wants to get our, you know, sure we're not using more than our three CF dusts out the springs, and if we get our tank prepared, and so that's kind of a quick protocol that I was saying.
But this is the agreement, this is the MOU that will allow Bellevue to get onto the property. Your services.
And it only goes up until the preliminary engineering report. So once that preliminary engineering report is finished, then there's a diff, then the issues become we have this information, how do we use this information to implement, or what what are we actually gonna do with the spring, because we may need to do, we may need to move it a little bit to stay within DEQ regulations. So that might be one aspect, or we might not need to do anything, except there are some things we need to do to the collection site just to make sure that stuff can't get into our water, and maybe, yeah, so we just need to get that survey down, that's the most important thing.
Any questions about the contents in the MOU?
I I just thought you said that this only goes to the, this goes through the project.
It does.
And in fact, you got them to agree to really whenever.
The stuff that, the stuff that we need done, the next, the next main thing that happens after we get this information that we need access to this land for is the preliminary engineering report. So we don't, might not necessarily need access to this land, it doesn't include that, it doesn't include anything further than preliminary engineering.
It, the term is through the completion of the project.
Yeah, it's, 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 but
But I'm saying kudos to you.
But
For just
But there isn't, we don't need to, we don't need to run a land survey after we do the
I agree, we simply say you got a lot of leeway.
No, yeah, so good clarification, the term is to the end, end of the project.
And we can amend the MOU to add different things when, when, when those same issues, and we just don't know what the issues are yet.
Uh, I did have one question about the, one of the whereas, just simply curious about the wording. But we haven't issued any revenue bonds, does it matter?
We haven't issued any what, sorry?
Any rep, we don't have an issuance of revenue bond yet. So I'm just curious, it says whereas the city is, has received funding through the issuance of revenue bond, it's, it's not, it's, but we are allowed to issue them, so I didn't know if that was relevant to. Um, and and I was curious about with possible supplemental funding through a grant for the purpose of updating. I was under the impression that grant is being spent now, and when we burn through that, then we would begin needing to issue revenue bonds.
There's still continual grant money out there for other, there's other grants that we can still pursue to put on top of this, and this was discussed in the bond, it's not a one and done, we're done searching for money. We're continuing to search for money in other ways that we can offset the actual amount we need to loan or bond for.
Yeah. Truly supplemental.
Other grants at this time, awesome, yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have, we haven't been given the bond money yet, you're right, but I don't think it really
No, no, I really meant the issuance, cuz we, we haven't issued, that's a very specific, you know, thing about, so just wording, I was just
Yeah, what this, what this is
Another question is about what it is, truly just about that statement.
Yeah, but what has been put out here is the lack of project management. And so we've been delayed by different things, by what, by timing of different things. And so this was a tool that I brought to both our water attorney and our city attorney. So, hey, let's just do one of these, the plan donor, so we can move forward to get the survey done and get on the property. So this is our first step into the door, and as it shows, we continued it through the project. So, you know, we don't get halfway through it, they says, oh, I'm pulling your key, we're not gonna let you out anymore. This allows us to move forward, get the preliminary engineering, which then gets pre-approved by DEQ, reviewed by council, goes through public comment before we go into full design and planning, which we need to have completed by, I would say, early spring, so we can break ground as soon as the snow comes off next spring. And we can be done by December of twenty twenty six with this project.
You know, I really don't need to be argumentative, but lauding this a year after it probably should have happened, I think we can just kind of focus on this, but it begs the question why it's taken a year, and I don't think we wanna get into that. So I don't think we need to go into, look what I did a year later, I've gotten us on the property. I'm just, can we just kind of focus on this? I think we all know that the deadlines have been an issue, and that for us, I sent an email a year ago, April first, saying land access should be a huge concern, let's just
No, let's not go on, let's remember, let's continue.
What, what's, you know, well, let me just reply, since you had wanted to continue on, that's all. I had said, I'm curious about the whereas, that's it.
Hey, Tom?
So, um, one of the requirements is that the complete the tank valve repairs by May fifteen, so that's two weeks away. Is that gonna be?
I just spoke with the engineering team that's gonna be assisting with that. We have the parts, they have the team, and they said they can meet that commitment.
And and maybe that answered the broader question, the city feels like, okay, we can meet the responsibilities and we're confident that manor can meet their responsibilities and therefore, let's go forward.
Yes.
And what happens if we miss it? Does it invalidate the agreement?
What's that?
What happens if we miss the action item F on May fifteenth? Does it invalidate the agreement?
It could, yes.
Okay.
Make a motion on the table.
Everything to, Hammy, do you? Just some attack.
I mean, except for a couple of grammatical clarifications which don't don't rise to the level of changing the Don't rise to the level of changing the.
They're not substantive to the agreement.
Exactly.
Yeah, I. I caught those myself.
I, I would make a motion to approve resolution number twenty-five dash thirteen, which is a resolution of Congress and City of W. Authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city, the Emery, the memorandum of understanding to Idaho Ranch to establish the terms and conditions under which the owner will allow access to and over Idaho property to complete preparation of the preliminary engineering.
I second the motion.
As an N P A.
Yes.
Councilmember Bergen.
Yes.
Councilmember Mahoney.
Yes.
Repeated.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We're moving on to item B, consideration and approval of resolution number twenty-five dash one-four, authorizing the formation of a comprehensive plan steering committee. Brian Parker, Community Development Director.
All right, yes. Thank you, Brian Parker, Community Development Director. This one is an ad hoc or kind of a temporary committee for the next couple of years. But it's an advisory committee to development of the comprehensive plan. As I'm sure some of you are aware, the Idaho state code requires us to consider a variety of different factors in our comprehensive planning documents. And as such, I want to make sure that we had representatives and expertise within those given fields. There, there are several public agencies and nonprofit groups and other subject matter experts that are included in my committee list, as well as a few members of the community. And I am continuing to work on acquiring a few more members. I'm aiming for about twenty people on the committee. So it'll probably be another resolution at your next meeting with a few more names. But yeah, for now, this is forming the committee. Then the next steps, like I said, one more or a resolution to get a few more members on there. Then we're gonna have a kickoff meeting and do a sober word timeline. Project management's expectations throughout the development of the plan. And then we'll bring that back to council. So in the summer. And that'll stand for any questions?
Questions for Brian?
Oh, I'd say my first question is that this is a really huge number of social services and especially in the land use group NGOs that have been very verbal about very specific uses for Bellevue that seem contrary to what many people have voiced their desires for Bellevue to be. And so I was wondering if perhaps there should be more balance in some of these categories. You have a developer and somebody who advocates for density and somebody who have, who has redefined homelessness to mean that you didn't say for your retirement, but you lived there all your life and you should be subsidized, which is something she's been advocating up in Ketchum. So is there a way maybe we could diversify some of these categories with fewer NGOs and groups that are, that are dedicated to some of the things that maybe some Bellevue residents are not really all that in favor of?
Like I said, the intent of the public sector and nonprofit entities was really to be subject matter experts and to make sure that we are covering those topics, recovering them well, and the information that we are providing and facing our policies and goals on is correctly valid. And based on my knowledge of the area and connection that we're, that seem like the appropriate contacts, based on what I know. If the council has other members in the committee, either they would like to see, we're still looking for them.
What's the, sorry, go ahead, but.
Go ahead, Nick. Sorry.
Question for clarification?
Yes.
What developer are you referring to Suzanne? I'm, I'm clear. Julian Sari is listed as a contractor and architect.
He's not a developer, just a.
Yeah, he's an architect. Well, he, he worked within the subdivision right down it. But I, I'm okay with if you don't want to consider the development aspects of subdivisions as, you know, being involved in development. That's fine. That's, that's okay. Then, right? I don't believe that's what I said at all. Well, I said development. I'm sorry. He's in developer. He's in development. He's in building. Is that better? No. Well, okay, I'm sorry. What do you want? Tom?
This, it, it seems like a pretty diverse group. Like, you know, I would say it's kind of consistent with the type of people that we've seen on, probably even with the prior plan, including many of these same entities, not necessarily the same people, but the same entities. And I think that's true of the counties. Not plan revision and, and others. So nothing here kind of struck me as long and appropriate, good, diverse crew. If there could be people added, that's great. You know, if people are just citizens of Bellevue that are interested, that's great too. You know. I, I know Tom Blanchard does, I think he's a resident of Bellevue, kind of identified that way. I think he's on the board of mountain rides as well.
Yes.
And not that that's his special interest or anything, but that's just an added kind of benefit.
Well, I saw your staff report section of this. I did, I did want to see a little bit more resident participation. So I was happy to see that this was your first list and that there was room for addition. Cause I am in agreeance with some people in council where I think we should see a little bit more resident and local business participation. But it looks like there's room for that. So I was happy to see that.
Much easier to find the folks that have a website and I can pull their email and phone numbers. So that's why all the folks that have websites are including this one that, like I said, round up a few more members and have more space.
Are council members welcome to recommend?
Encouraged.
Things, okay. So, and I do recall you saying that at the last meeting. So.
Councilmember Obenoff, provided to keep contacting. Wonderful.
I think this, this group is a, a good diverse group that has a lot of experience and stake in, in how we move forward with design of our, of our city. For example, B C R D, they are, we have been in talks in the past about them developing playing fields for the kids in our city so that they're not having to have mom and dad drive them all the way up to the skate park or the pool or what have you up in Haley. We have the school district represented. This is a, a big tool for them as they plan forward for the future of where and what schools are needed for for our community. So there's, there's a, I, I think it's a good representation. John Wright with the canal company, there's canals all over the city. Maybe they're not being used. But so I feel like it's a good representation. I am pleased to hear that there are a, a, a group of citizens that are interested in participating. It's a, it's a long process. But it's also fun to get that deep, deeply involved in your community. So welcome there.
But.
For clarification, when, when are you hoping to complete the committee and when are you hoping to have your first meeting?
So I expect the next council meeting to have a resolution for the remainder of the committee seats.
Okay.
The first meeting, once I finalize or got close to finalizing, it will be on the committee. I'll send out a doodle poll that can get the time availability by aiming for early June the first.
So between, you know, in the next week or so, I would say get your recommendations to Brian.
So what is the purpose of this committee? They're a resource for the committee that's actually going to be working on the comprehensive plan?
Yeah, I will be working on comprehensive plan. I'll be the document writer. I don't really expect them to be writing it. I do expect them to, like I said, write feedback, make sure that data and information that we have available is fresh, the best available. And effectively guiding how we shape our golden policies that will be the outcome of the document. And assist in engagement and make sure that engagement is inclusive of all of our residents.
And so how will you be engaging with all the residents to make sure that the plans reflect above the desires of the community and that outreach and engagement has meaningfully reached the broad spectrum of residents? I mean, they're not present in the advisory committee. So they're not gonna be participating. You're gonna revision.
There will be an engagement plan. There will be part of the scope of work that I'll be reviewing with the committee. And. Yeah, I think. So you.
Okay, so at this point, you will be re-envisioning Bellevue and these majority of people who do not leave, live in Bellevue will be advising you. So is that fair?
No.
No. Okay. Sorry.
Well, the community is to be the guiding vision of the document. I want them to be involved in the creation of it. I want them to be engaged in the process. However, there needs to be a consistent voice. There needs to be somebody who is reviewing it, make sure that it's technically correct and it's. Yada, yada, yada.
Okay. And so how do you engage the residents?
Stay tuned.
Oh, I'm sure you said stay tuned. I'm sorry. Like, I gotta hold it. All right, thank you.
Snacks will be provided. I mean, there'll be public hearing for this.
Yes, public engagement, just like the last time. Where you had a, a booth set up at the Memorial Day, I mean Labor Day festivities and we had people, we had little pavs, people putting different. So there's plenty of opportunity to engage. And it's a, really, I thought we decided it was kind of a revision, not a whole rewrite. We're not throwing out the baby with the bathwater. We're rewriting, we're revising it and updating it, making sure it stays, it is current and reflects as you say, to some of the goals and objectives we hope to see as a community.
And the previous advisory committee that you were on was largely people not from Bellevue. Is that also true? You did it at the original time.
No. No.
Oh, there was residents? But now it's.
All residents.
All residents.
Okay, the majority of residents, but this will be pursued with advisors from outside Bellevue. That's the main difference.
So we have seven seats available for the discussion we've been having. And I would like to recommend that it's filled with more residents. It sounds like you would like to see more residents. So a, at this time, this is not a complete committee. It sounds like there's at least, I mean, that's not quite fifty percent, but there's seven, and we could push that further. I mean, that's not a hard and fast number that you've seen at twenty. So if, but right now Brian needs residents to offer their time and sign up. And he needs council to bring recommendations to him.
I'll sign up. But you don't want council people, right? Because why?
You get to vote on it. I mean, yeah, I would like to see documents to be a bottom-up democratic, direct democracy, setting a policy when we introduce some council members. They are inherently top-down influence.
I'm all for direct democracy and I look forward to seeing all the people that you contact, the list of all the people you contact.
And I want to make sure too, just because only Tom Blanchard says Bellevue resident, it doesn't, I mean, do you know where everybody else lives?
No.
On this list?
I do.
Not, are you sure? I just want to make sure. You don't know where Mike McKenna lives or C.C. Osborne lives? So they could very well be Bellevue residents. I just want to.
They, yes, they very well could be, they.
I just wanted to be sure. And Andrea, she lives here. You, you, did you know that or do you not know that, John? I didn't. I just wanted to make sure. So it's not that we're, we're we have removed Bellevue residents. It is specific to a labor of special, like as the comprehensive plan is broken down into different components, these voices are just voices that can speak to making sure that what we have isn't illegal, is, is.
They're experts in those fields.
Yes, I was getting you.
I was just helping.
I just wanted to make sure that we weren't secluded or precluding Bellevue residents because some of these people are actually Bellevue residents.
Where they double dip is.
Yeah, it's up to them.
And so just to, to follow up, my involvement would be top-down, but somebody who's already documented is having very specific opinions about Bellevue development and what Bellevue should do with their density. That is not a concern.
Oh.
Right. I mean, you have documents authored by people on your note specifically indicating that Bellevue should have greater density and seems like there's an agenda there. How does that differ from the agenda that I think that I'm representing?
They're not ordering to adopt documents.
They're not going to.
Yeah, but we get the voting to do that. So they can advise based on current laws and best practices and, and what we the voices that they've heard. They can only recommend. That doesn't mean.
They can opine. Yeah. I, 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 listen, I just am stunned that it's not full of Bellevue residents as it has been before.
Again, that you don't know that they're, it's not full of Bellevue residents. I just want to clarify that if you're trying to point that out. You don't know any of, if you don't know any of those people and where they live, you can't say they're not Bellevue residents.
But that I just would like to, and as you've noted, you like more residents. I'm simply saying that previously this was a resident-driven thing. That's who was on your, on your council. And this seems like a, a considerable change to see the people that are trying to affect change in communities up and down, being your advisory board. And, and you know, obviously that's something that this council has to vote on and that you're bringing forth your best product. So I'm not trying to disparage your work. I think it's concerning in a small community like that, that it is not community, it is not residents that are advocating for themselves and guide development.
Your comment is noted.
Thank you.
I would move, I got to the resolution number twenty-five four-two, establishing a comprehensive plan by the committee. Those are the rules establishing effective and termination, effective dates and termination dates.
Seven. Council President Shay.
Yes.
Councilmember Bergen.
Yes.
Councilmember Mahoney.
Yes.
No.
Yeah.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Just for, for Brian, for clarification for those online, for the community, potential for newspaper. I feel like there's a bit of call to action here for Bellevue residents who would like to join this committee. What is the best way for them to reach out?
To contact me, my email is bparker@bellevueidaho.us.
Thank you. Moving on to item nine C, consideration and approval of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero-three, establishing a community events committee, establishing responsibilities and providing for its membership and operation. I'll give a little background context to this before I hand it over to Brian Parker. Councilmember Obenoff had established kind of an ad hoc committee that had helped produce kind of city-driven events and started to put some volunteer energy and time behind our events. And I had asked Brian and Brian from Community Development and Kristen, who is our community services manager, to work on this here to make an official community events committee so that we could have even more energy behind kind of our community programming. But hopefully in the future, cultural diversity programming, there's a big desire from, that we're hearing from our residents, that they want more community opportunities, community connection opportunities. So this was, you know, a start to get that established as a committee. And so Brian, I'll let you kind of take it over from there.
I really don't have a whole lot to add. One point of clarification, there were a few, there were a couple of things happening simultaneously. Amy was finalizing the packet. Rick was reviewing the ordinance. The not final version of the ordinance did not get included in your packet. It's printed out in front of you guys. There the difference is there is a requirement in the code that it falls over me on. So that has been added in. And so there's an updating motion in this memo that is also printed out for you guys on how to adopt that with the correct language.
Any questions or discussion?
I think this is long overdue. Back in the old days?
I make a motion, we wait the three readings and we find title only. Bellevue uh, ordinance number twenty-five zero three.
House Member Davis.
Yes.
House Member Reed.
Yes.
House Member Mahoney.
Yes.
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 No, I'm sorry.
There are open meeting lots about your advisory committee as well.
At all committees of the city are subject to.
Um, you guys might be talking about that E-Drive Public Meeting Management System with all these new committees that may be advantageous. To, you know, centralize them all on one management system to make it easier.
Sorry to interrupt, but we're in the middle, we have to then move on. You know, it's okay, but we are in the middle of. The process on this motion, so.
I believe it needs to be read by title only. I will offer to do that, Mayor. Uh, City Bellevue Idaho ordinance number twenty-two-five dash oh-three. An ordinance of the city of Bellevue establishing a community events committee, establishing responsibilities and providing for its membership and operation.
I make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty-two-five oh-three, establishing a community events committee.
The additional that Brian was referring to.
I move to approve ordinance twenty-five oh-three with section two dash two dash four modified to include subsection C. To state open meeting laws, the committee shall comply with the applicable provisions of Idaho's open meeting laws contained in title seventy-four. Chapter two of Idaho Code.
Council President Shay.
Yes.
House Member Bergen.
Yes.
House Member Mahoney.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. I move to authorize publication of the summary of the ordinance twenty-five dash zero three.
House Member Davis.
Yes.
House Member Reed.
Yes.
House Member Mahoney.
Yes.
House Member Bergen.
Yes.
Council President Shay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't see this.
That was the. And we are moving on to item nine, the. Consideration and approval of ordinance number twenty-five, twenty-two-five dash zero four, amending Bellevue's. City code by amending title nine, buildings in construction, section nine dash two dash four. Construction standards and design criteria to enable administrative review for encroachment permits. For driveways and for private streets, updating applicable design standards and criteria. And providing for the effective date of the ordinance upon passage, approval and publication according to law. Brian Parker, Community Development Director.
Alright, thank you, yes, so this one is really focused on our um, for governance, being fair and how we're making our decisions and we're administering our code. Uh, this is an item that was identified as not being consistent with how we've been administering our code. Encroachment permit applications for driveways uh, to the council for approval and our code says that we opt to. Uh, and so uh, in. That sense, we are going to uh, proposing to change the code to make those an administrative approval. Uh, through the Work Department and the City Engineer. The reasoning behind this, they're fairly technical in nature, they're very routine, uh, probably not substantial enough. Impactful enough to warrant a lot of council time uh, on these sometimes long meetings. And then additionally, uh, if we get a bunch of these over a two-week period, we batch them all up at a council meeting, the next day we're gonna have. Tobacco is all running around three or all the same guy, and that is. Yeah, you're very safe and not very great for neighbors. And so that outstanding, any questions?
So this is something that's supposed to be happening at the council level and is not. So the question of what specific inefficiencies in the current council-led permitting process is irrelevant. Because we have, we don't have any, because it's not happening, is that right? We don't have any inefficiencies in our process because we haven't been doing it, is that correct?
The inefficiency is that we are not following our own code.
Okay, so how about we work on just starting with that, the code as it's currently.
The uh, item E tonight is a encroachment permit application.
Great, let's do it.
Can I just put something from your memo to put out on the table for clarification? You are asking for um, a change to the ordinance uh, to establish administrative process. For permits for driveways and private streets, not um, uh, construction activities such as utility installation.
That is right.
It's the administrative process is specific to driveways and private streets.
Is there a reason you wouldn't include utilities? That's just as technical and maybe just as pressing, let's say on call, it says, oh, I don't know, call it says, we're gonna have to crew out there, you know.
Some of the items such as what is on the agenda tonight uh, for the undergrounding and power pole. Uh, probably more, or is probably something that could be made administrative, I wasn't quite sure where to draw that line at this point in time. Some of the utility installations are gonna involve tearing up a street and doing a bunch, you know, a lot of linear work down the street. And that is something that the council should probably be aware of and like form a community and uh. Also incorporated in capital improvement plans that we want to execute.
Yeah, that, that's kind of maybe two different types of utilities, right? You know, if you have a substantial project, it's in a city right away, like a water line, for example. Um, versus, yeah, we wanna go underground and, and just run it across the alley or something like that. I appreciate you have to draw a line somewhere, but, but. In my experience, utilities have been an administrative process, uh, because they kind of understood. Staff, you know, generally understood the technical components of it and also understood what was necessary to make sure that that street got put back together the way it needed to be put back together. But. Maybe that's for another day to expand this, uh, I was just curious.
Yeah, we're always open revising.
Land, you have a question?
Uh, I, I did, um, is, is there an opportunity, and correct me if I'm wrong, if I didn't see it in here? For uh, a situation to um, come up where. You are not comfortable or you might have a camp, a conflict in approving an application. And in that situation, you would have the opportunity to punt it to the appropriate body for approval?
Uh, so the.
For their consideration.
City engineers, the uh, approving entity or their designated, uh, so. They would be the ones that would be wanting to get somewhere. And currently that is a contracted service, so uh, we could typically contract a different firm. Uh, if we needed to. Impartial review and some instances where our contracted engineers has. But there's also an appeal process, uh, if one or more party disagrees with the decision of the administrator. Uh, they can appeal to council.
Very, is it notice, I mean, to surrounding landlords, say, we're gonna put a utility line through here, um, I've proved it. How would you, why would you appeal or how would you appeal if you didn't know it's current of that tractor show up?
It's most likely it'll be coming from the property owner wanting to sell driveway that doesn't like our holder size or. Sell swale or something to that effect. But yes, to your point, they would be ready to fill for a neighbor to be informed enough to issue the deal.
I know it's a little bit of an administrative burden to send out a letter, but um. As a neighbor, I might be kind of curious to know what is happening with a utility line, right, so we get a utility line, but. With a private, a private street in particular, um, or so maybe in a driveway, um.
The reason that I include private streets and I was, they're almost always going to come through councils by um, something to be plating. Uh, so that you're already seeing it in advance, it's going to be publicly announced in advance and then. The technical component at the end of how it actually connects in with our road system would be what's happening.
There, there might also be an opportunity, um, as has been done in the past. Um, to laminate a notice on a. Piece of paper, staple it to a piece of lath and pound it in the ground and then you've. You posted the property and neighbors, when they're out walking their dog, they can, they, oh, I wonder what that says. But I, I think that, that, that would, would be a good piece to uh, take into consideration is notifying. And be a joiner anyway.
There, you could put it on the applicant to do it. Yes, there, there is opportunity to add additional approval to either council level or administrative application, one of which could be notified neighbors. You know, it's kind of consistent with the transparency guide you have before.
So is this how Haley and Ketchum do it in an administrative process and has there been anything? The ordinance, were there any changes to the ordinance based on their successes and the, or failures in the process?
I reviewed their ordinance when drafting language for ours, I did not contact any of them to ask how it is going. Uh, but I work very closely with all of those entities and can check in, it's just consistent with the way the county does it too much.
So you make note and I'm kind of, just want to make sure consistency of standards, right, so. There's other factors as deemed necessary, so um. How will you ensure the consistent application of technical standards across permits when you have. Kind of big language like that, where does that come in in your, in the process documentation?
There's a couple of different checks on that, one is that it is the city engineer again, that is the approving body. Uh, who is required to be a professional engineer, have a license, you're willing to put a stamp on it, puts reputation on it. Uh, and then also the appeal process, that if the applicant feels that we're unreasonably applying. Uh, conditions on their permit, they can appeal it to council.
Um, what do you, how well do you feel you define the appeals? Process, because I do see that you have it in ordinance, but is it pretty accessible? I mean, a lot of these things are driveways and small. Businesses or people is a, a pretty simple process.
The, I don't know if I include that ordinance language in the section that I. It is roughly a paragraph long and is fairly easy.
It's not expensive to pursue or anything like that. Um, and do you, so with these things kind of taking place in a vacuum maybe? And I don't know how many this is about, what do we have, a hundred a year, ten a year, two a year? Is there some sort of threshold we've already met with a pileup? Or no, this is all brand new, it hasn't really happened before?
We do have several applications pending, we're still waiting on updated documentation from a lot of them.
So you're thinking. Okay, um. Then I guess, uh, is there, with all that again happening over there, no visibility really? Or is there visibility to the council, can there be kind of changes or cumulative impacts that? People responsible for, you know, that we should know about, is there any reporting on, I don't know, can you, you might see trends, is there anything that we. Are gonna miss out on? Again, understanding this is not currently happening. But is there any threat of, you know, we miss out on these cumulative impacts and understanding what they are?
I'm exploring after them doing that, um, my department reports I do include, you know, how many permits we've received issued in the last month. Uh, but yeah, there's always improvement in those cumulative impacts is something that.
Well, it sounds like, I mean, I haven't been doing it, we get to do one. Right, today, tonight, do we get to do it?
Yeah, so it sounds like what utility will still comes before council. And if eventually the council deems that to be administrative, that can be intended to do.
Well, just one question about the text, on, on page uh, one fifty, well, on page four, one fifty-eight, we have it. The line uh, what would be ninety-six, ninety-five, uh, it has standards of Idaho Department of Transportation. Um, Idaho standards for public works construction, um, Idaho standards for public works construction. Is, is that?
Brian, I didn't, I didn't hear your answer to the question.
There is a duplicated, alright.
Thank you.
Uh, I think the only other thing is that typically this would be a way for public visibility when these things come through. Um, for our large, large studio audience. Um, so how will the city address resident concerns about impacts like traffic safety without any sort of. Um, council review and, and really not a lot of visibility like they may have had. If we brought it back into the council environment, especially you're talking about conceptually, there's a dogpile of ten that would be evaluated and thus. Out in public. Far more naturally or easily, what is the hope or plan for that sort of transparency and information?
Yeah, again, that's something I'm looking into, hoping that we can find some good digital solutions on, you know, having a nice map or something to that effect. But yeah, meantime, I think uh, stop by the office, give me an email, give me a phone call, that'd be a good way to.
Are these things that need to be codified in the ordinance, how you're gonna achieve these goals? I'm just asking, I don't know. Is that for placing down energy, thinking about something else?
Monitor that with the, the report, you could buy saying, okay, we did three of these and maybe it doesn't address even though. Some of the drive-by thing, it's pretty good, or, oh, it's higher than the adjacent street, that's not good, it's all gonna drain down. You know, it seems like the awarding would be out of good room.
But I also think there, it's a, it's a collaborative effort with our street department because. Uh, typically they go out and inspect once an encroachment permit has been completed, once the encroachment has been completed. And if it doesn't meet um, with the street department approval and it needs to be redone. The, the applicant needs to redo the work. Oh, and I'm not, I was mostly asking if, if we're saying that we're gonna have this level of transparency or certain performance, but. Should it be documented in the ordinance so that it's followed, that when everybody's gone in a year or five years or what have you? That it's still saying, they're saying, you must publish this information every month. That's all I meant, is, is it appropriate to add performance criteria to an ordinance? I don't, I'm just asking.
That would be an administrative procedure level thing that doesn't typically make it into an ordinance. I would also have some concerns that there's really no beat behind that, they're not gonna haul me off to jail if I'm not publishing.
Can you give me an example? Because I'm, I'm trying to process your question and I, I think I need an example of. I think that when you, uh, simply if you're looking at an ordinance as something that dictates behavior and expectations. That if you had a certain expectation, rather than making it broad, like. Please make sure these things are shared with the community, that's your line, say, I don't know what you would like. Instead, you would say there must be a published um, document monthly that states what the. What changes are being made, what encroachment, what permits? In that, that simply says this must be done on a monthly basis and stuck on the bulletin board, I don't know. But an actual performance and actual action. But an actual performance, an actual action. That does give some teeth to, did you do it or not? And thus you're in violation of. What part of the, the ordinance, same as if you said you were going to, you know. Encroachment permit applications for this that shall be reviewed and approved, approved with conditions or denied by. Think there's value to definitions and details about them, that's, alright, so, you know, specificity, so. And reporting is what I was saying, a reporting requirement.
Kind of like, there was a noticing requirement.
Yeah, noticing, like something like that.
A noticing.
So basically, a, a specific administrative. Aspect of this that has a level of, uh, publication for the community is what you're saying.
So with the community development director's monthly publication where he.
Staff report.
Hits his staff report, thank you, where he, he lists. The, uh, amount of permits and different types of things that he's been working on, um, would that suffice? Or are you looking for a publication, like something published in the newspaper?
Simply asking if it was appropriate.
I'm just trying to understand.
No, so maybe he meets the, the requirement. By saying, I meant this was noticing requirement every two weeks, every month or what have you, I put this in the, the public record, that's all.
Just trying to understand, yeah, how far.
Yeah, we're asking that there should be.
Got it, if there should be language around, uh, communication requirements is what.
Yes, yes, thank you.
I, my recommendation for what I'm hearing from our community development director is, let's see how it goes and we can amend if language is needed. Um, it'll be in your staff report, if there needs to be a further level of that, we can bring an amendment with appropriate language that. Um, what I would say is something that is. Able to be administered because what we're seeing right now, um, and what I have found in other ordinance as well, as we're. Trying to fix process within the city is that we are, um, not abiding by some ordinances already as they're written. So making sure that our ordinances are, uh, written well and achievable as written would be the goal. Um. To kind of have questions in regards to community communication around these things, um. Just for clarification, when it comes to encroachment permits, driveways, things like that, is there a reason? Those aren't noticed or, or, uh, notified to neighbors as other things are, um, historically, just to clarify, um.
Because they're typically considered fairly ministerial in nature, they're. Kind of below the legislative level or, you know, quasi judicial either, um, they're similar to getting a building permit, we would notify the neighbors like that because. They really have no recourse at that point in time, that's. That technical review.
Like it's a property on the right.
Not say it doesn't have impacts.
Yeah, exactly, but just because. He doesn't want me to develop that land because it's always been vacant for him and he's parked on it forever and some neighbors and stuff.
And I, I can see it, therefore it's mine, yeah.
Any other questions for Brian at this time? Or discussion on the topic?
No, ma'am.
It is an action item, so.
So we're looking for a motion and make a motion, we wait the three readings. And read the title in the. Second. Amy Rockoff.
Sorry, it's okay. Council member Mahoney.
Yes.
Yes.
Council member Davis.
Yes.
Council member Reed.
Yes.
Motion passes.
And we best.
Uh, I will move, uh, to read ordinance number twenty-two-five dash oh four by title only.
You already did that.
I did, I just realized that, that was coming out of my mouth. Did it for emphasis, it was for emphasis. I'm gonna go and read the title. Got, I got it. Hopefully, no other. Things swirling around here. Uh, city of Bellevue Idaho ordinance number twenty-two-five dash oh four in ordinance of the city of Bellevue Idaho. Amending Bellevue city code by amending title nine. Buildings and construction section nine two four, construction standards and design criteria to enable administrative review. For encroachment permits for driveways and private streets, updating applicable design standards and criteria and providing for the effective date of disordance upon passage, approval and publication. According to law.
I make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty-five dash four. So.
Council member Reed.
Yes.
Council member Davis.
Yes.
Council member Bergen.
Yes.
Council member Mahoney.
Yes.
President Shay.
Yes.
Motion passes.
I also move to authorize the publication of the summary of this ordinance as well. Twenty-five dash oh four, second.
Council member Reed.
Yes.
Council member Davis.
Yes.
Council President Shay.
Yes.
Council member Bergen.
Yes.
Council member Mahoney.
Yes.
Thank you. Last item on the agenda is nine A, or sorry, nine E, I apologize. Consideration of an encroachment application for the installation of a transformer to serve underground service to new home. At four twenty north sixth street. We have, um, Chris Johnson, Public Works Director, and then we also have Brian Manning, I don't. You want to switch off or?
Uh. So Brian put an application, uh, for an encroachment permit, he called me last week, um, they had already noticed that they were gonna do the work. Um, they'd notified the residents of what work was gonna be performed and, uh. Brian Parker, Community Development Director, I. Free shot to him about it and he said that we have new policy, well, we're gonna follow our code. Where it says we have to bring utilities to the common council and so I informed the applicant, um. That we cannot, I cannot authorize him to perform the work and that he need to submit the. Application for an encroachment permit and I would get it on the first council and here it is. You have anything, Brian, what I have?
No beliefs?
No, okay. He's not, he's not here. So, um. Again. Just because we've been doing it the wrong way doesn't mean that we should do it the wrong way, so, um, I supported, uh. Our community development director and, um. I bring this before you, it seems like a pretty, uh, you know. Not much substance that leads to having to get powerless houses, it's gonna be, power will be out in the area for. Maybe an hour or two tops, um, as they make replacements and everything will go on.
When you say power will be out in the area, only to that home that the transformer served?
That'll be about four halves of maybe five, it's, it's whatever's directly connected to that transformer that's gonna be out. And again, um, I don't power has notified the customers of the temporary outage. And that will be affected.
They have?
They have.
Okay, sorry.
So when they do it for that house, do the whole the other houses get underneath or they're still on the, a pole? I was just curious.
I honestly am not sure, um, since I, since we haven't been doing it this way, um, I haven't been working on the encroachments, so this is one last place to job that I'm. Not familiar with and I'm learning, um. You know, but we can look at, we have encroachments all around the city that, um, if.
Well, I was just truly just curious how it worked. I'm not, I mean, I know the work has to get done, I was just curious if it. Got used by the other homesteaders.
When they put in to have their.
To have a service bearing.
Yeah.
And I think it sends us off to an infill lot instead of, you know, when they rebuild, so they're just. It's easier to do it this way than to do it in the wrong.
So, you know, I love about Muldrick Canyon and the, the power line stop, was that the little green box? That's my old transformer, yeah, okay, thank you, I was like, I think it's the little green box, alright, thank you.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, shoot.
So I would move to, uh. Through the encroachment permit for I O power for utility installation at four twenty north sixth street, in that alley, yes. Even though it's, it's just, and conditions of, uh, reasonable criteria.
Council member Reed.
Yes.
Council member Davis.
Yes.
Council member Shay.
Yes.
Council member Bergen.
Yes.
Council member Mahoney. Council member Mahoney.
Yes.
Thank you. It's after this time that I will accept some more. Yeah. Second from Tom Bergen, all in favor? Thank you.